Okay, good evening everyone. I'd like to call the meeting to order. Please stand for the flag to believe.
United States of America and to the Republic which stands one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Mr. Vay, please call the call.
Mr. Verowski?
Here.
Mr. Corum?
Present.
Mrs. Drury?
Here.
Mr. Oliger?
Present.
Mr. Montani?
Yes.
Mrs. Sexton?
Yes.
Mrs. Traynor?
Here.
Ms. Heen?
Here.
And Dr. Marianne?
Uh, present.
Onto announcements and recognitions. Dr. Gistap.
Thank you, Mr. President. Thank you, Mr. President. I'm going to defer to Dr. Sable for two-one and two-two.
Thank you. Um, first order of business, Something Rotten, our spring musical, is taking place March fifth, sixth, seventh, and eighth. Um, it will start at seven-thirty, I believe, if I just ask. I know that these students work tremendously hard, um, getting prepared for this, so if you could all come out, um, to support our students in the theater program, it would be much appreciated. We also have a list of student athlete awards, which I'm going to go through at this time. Um, we have Jersey Mike Student Athletes of the Week, Katie Johnson for girls' basketball, and Brooke Bittner for gymnastics. We had our winter's, um, signing day. Uh, three students signed for that day. Rachel Bane for Miller's Hill University, John Prug, Robert Morris University, and Emma Reynolds for Willing University. They will be attending those universities to continue their athletic as well as their academic careers. Our bocce team were third-place finishers in South Park Invitational. Brooke Bittner represented Shore Valley at the WPIAL varsity championship. She won gold for the Mars with an eight-five-five and placed fifth overall with a thirty-point-oh-five. And our hockey team is the Class A PIHL Gold Division Champions. Our all-section honors. Wait, are those all honors?
It's on the screen of mine, too.
It's patterned.
No, it's come up on here, too. I don't know what happened.
Can you move the project from the least show here? And we can do that one.
For next slide, it should be good. I think this one slide is broken.
All right, that works. All right. All-section honors: boys' basketball team, first-team all-conference, or all-section, Jayden Davis and Julian Simples. Second-team, Luca Federico, and Jayden Davis scored his two-thousandth career point this season. And girls' basketball, first-team, Rachel Bane, and second-team, Emma Reynolds, and Rachel also scored her thousandth point this season. All right. Um, our WPIAL wrestling qualifiers that took place over the past weekend, we had a few competitors. Cooper Moore at the hundred-and-seventh-pound weight class, Sam Berglander at the one-fourteen, Logan Conley at one-thirty-three, and Howard Clewen at one-eighty-nine competed. And the Section Three A, Section Two Coach of the Year is Bill Evans. Swimming, um, this is the first year that boys and girls both won their sections, so that was the first time in Shore Valley history. And we had a few, a bunch actually, WPIL qualifiers. I'm going to do my best with some of these names. I got tripped up earlier today. Addie Bates, Dawson Lee, Irina Vascothiv, Jenna Osborne, Onor Hauntipullit, Alina Welsh, Cindy Bornak, Shane Frederick, or Frederick, excuse me, Liam Lewis, Kenny McFerran, Kelsey Teal, Natalie Coats, and Jalen Welsh. Our indoor TSTCA championship qualifiers for indoor track, Jocelyn Ephamitis for the sixty-meter and two-meter meter dash, Sophie Conawick for the three-thousand, Shaylen Moore to sixty hurdles, Lily Nixon, the high jump, Oliver Tokar, the pole vault. Girls relay teams both the four-by-two, four-by-four, and, or, sorry, three, excuse me, and four-by-eight. Eric Wilson, the eight-hundred-meter, Brady Lough, or Loughlin, three-thousand-meter, Donnie Proudley, the pole vault, and the boys four-by-four and four-by-eight, all vault. One more, and it is a beautiful way to win. Um, our dance team competed in the two-thousand-and-twenty-five UDA High School National Championships. They placed fourth in the nation in hip-hop and eighth in the nation in jazz. And that adds to my report. Dr. Marianne?
Thank you, Dr. Sable. Item two-point-three and two-point-four, I just have some announcements for the audience tonight. First is safety and security updates. There was a community member that spoke, maybe last meeting, maybe the meeting before, that asked about the security situation across the garage, and defined it as a short-term need and a long-term need, which I agree with. Uh, the short-term need, we believe we have addressed. We have a working alarm system now, as of today, in that facility to protect our assets. Should have a security system in place anytime we have that much equipment on that location. With that now being installed, I've asked the board for permission to take the weekly pay that was used for security and restructure placement of those guards. Our first priority is going to be manning the entrance to the campus of our middle school and high school during the day. We will hopefully begin that detail on Monday, so we will take, uh, the approved payment, weekly payment, that was thirty-three-hundred dollars per week. The minutes will reflect that. Uh, from the last board meeting, you will use that person at the entrance to the high school. You will also notice signage. Uh, to be honest, I modeled the entrance after Long Tour School District, which I do believe does a nice job of alerting families to they're on the school zone, they're under video surveillance, and we have lights that will activate at night to light up the area to make our camera images a little bit better. So you will see a shift in the locations and the rolling controls of those already board-approved guards. So you will see that and feel that as you enter our campuses. Uh, last, I have to speak to the possible program curtailments. Uh, Ms. Wright and I, our Director of Finance, gave a public presentation about a month ago, and we talked about the district's deficit of nine million dollars as projected. Obviously, this isn't something that just happened. Uh, this was built over time, and as you know, the current climate of local economics, everything costs more. Everyone feels that in their daily lives, while school districts across the Commonwealth are filling it in their budgets. And so now we are getting hit with increased costs, decreased revenue because of the common level ratio being reduced, uh, and then increased personnel insurance and et cetera. So that leaves us with very difficult decisions and recommendations that have to be made. This budget does not raise taxes, so it holds the line on taxes, but it doesn't make significant program curtailments and eliminations. That is the only way we can present a budget to the state that is positive. We have an obligation on June thirtieth to present a budget to the Department of Education that is balanced. Ms. Wright, in her presentation publicly, said we have five million dollars remaining in fund balance. If we pull that money from the fund balance, we already have a financial recommendation to the board that they could be facing a possible takeover from the state. That and Shore Tier Valley should never happen in the same sentence. So yes, these are aggressive recommendations and cuts, but it has to happen. There is no other alternative to do that. So...
Great fact.
What you will see, excuse me, excuse me, everyone will have a seat. Listen, a lot of people have signed up to speak. We will be respectful and courteous to you when you do that. Please just hear me out, and we will listen to you during public comment. So we are addressing a nine-million-dollar budget deficit through significant curtailments and program eliminations. These changes, along with careful examination of department spending, will result in a seven-point-five-million-dollar reduction of expenditures. This is an aggressive approach, but it will correct years of growing budgetary concerns without increasing any burden on the local taxpayers. Along with these eliminations, this plan completely overhauls district security and increases focus on core academics, data-driven instruction, and computational thinking. We have identified vulnerabilities in our current security plan that have to be addressed. District five, I met with students last week, they know the vulnerabilities we have in our security plan. We have inefficiencies in our core academics. At the January board meeting, we talked about our ranking and the ten-year decline in our region. It's because we haven't had money and programs driven to core academics. This budget addresses that and attempts to fix that. We are still maintaining everything you saw on that list, these programs that are special to our students, that engage them in activities outside of their core day, and it keeps twenty AP offerings at the high school. It also blocks schedules, our middle school math and reading, to allow more time for differentiated instruction. These are tough decisions. They aren't easy for this board to make. They aren't easy for this administration to make, and I get it. I totally understand. But please note, every avenue is being pursued, and these recommendations come with a plan to increase and grow our academic demand. Thank you for hearing me out.
So, Dr. Gistap, just, just, I'm sorry, just so we get a clarity on this, uh, even if we raise taxes, the curtailments must go through.
So there's a gap.
Because the taxes are, what, about one-point-eight million dollars, and we're looking at a nine-million-dollar deficit. So unless taxes are nine million dollars, raising taxes is not an option to make up the difference.
That's correct. Uh, raising taxes does not satisfy the budget deficit.
Okay, moving on to public comments on agenda items. This is Heen.
We would like to invite residents, taxpayers, and students who wish to address the board to please state your name and address when you approach the board. We appreciate your interest. This section is for comments on agenda items. Kelly, did anyone sign up?
Yes, first is Eric W.
Hello? I'm kind of concerned. Why did the school board send an email?
No, hold on, hold on. You'll have to stand close and definitely speak louder.
Hello? That's better. Why did the school board send an email? Why did the school board send an email to teachers threatening them with disciplinary action to encourage students to attend this school board meeting?
You are asking who sent an email?
Not who, why.
Why? Just trying to clarify your question. You're asking why did the board send an email to students?
Could you please be quiet?
I'm sorry, I'm just trying to clarify for the board. So you're asking why did the board send an email inviting students to the meeting?
Yeah. No, please, please be respectful. Why did the school board send an email to teachers threatening them with disciplinary action if they encouraged students to attend this school board meeting?
That email was never sent, and that does not exist. The board did not threaten disciplinary action to any teachers to encourage students to come, that is not true.
I, whoa. I asked multiple of my teachers of this, and they did not respond by saying no. They said, I'm not comfortable with answering that question, and I don't know why they would be uncomfortable with answering no.
Yeah, so just so you know, this is public comment, so it's really not a question and answer session, that's respectful. Everybody will get, everybody will get their three minutes, so I'm just making sure he understands, like, if they're not gonna, if they don't necessarily respond, your time will continue to run, so.
Can we please give them the respect they deserve to answer the question? Well, they can't. I want them to.
The answer is there was no email sent by anyone.
If someone has it, could they present it?
Please do. Sir, do you have anything else? Your three minutes is about up.
Uh, no.
Okay, thank you.
I just want to start by saying that I have sympathy for the board. I know that there's a lot of financial difficulty, a lot of tough decisions. I also have a lot of sympathy for my teachers, who are in a lot of fear right now. I'm Brady Bart, a current junior at CBHS, and I'll be speaking on the Human Resources Report. Specifically, I'd like to comment on the elimination of two social studies positions at the high school. Quote, truly, whoever can make you believe absurdities can make you commit atrocities. That's an eerily relevant quote from Voltaire, a French Enlightenment writer who I got to learn about in world history last year. Kids today are trapped in echo chambers online, which feed them a constant stream of tailored information. This information suits their beliefs without any consideration for facts or context. I see the negative effects of this new technological age within my own peers. The one thing that liberates them from these biased narratives they consume is their public school education. For this very reason, I was shocked to find that under the position eliminations category of the Human Resources Report, two social studies positions were listed. Next year, I look forward to taking AP Government and Macroeconomics, frankly, as an apartment staff. The history courses at CB have been the highlight of my days since sixth grade. Each year, the details I learn about ancient practices and parts of our country's history challenge my own beliefs. My critical thinking skills have been developed by our great social studies staff here at CB. The freedom in this country and community, which allows me to speak here tonight, can never be taken for granted. The pledge of allegiance I took upon arrival to this auditorium implores me to fight for that freedom. The biggest threat I see to that freedom is stupidity. Therefore, the first step to maintaining my freedom is civic education. It is critical that the district throughout each student's life prepares them for the broader society they will enter after graduation. These eliminations do not fit well with the tumultuous political landscape we live in. Our both sides of the youth are targeted to be used as pawns for a power game, which is played on every level of our society. Government touches every aspect of our lives. History is what forms the present. Psychology is what determines our daily interactions. Economics rules our financial train. So please, protect the objective education we receive in these subjects. It is important now more than ever. I have additional time. I just want to say that it's not just social studies. I feel forever, and I just wanted to focus on that. I also noticed that there was a foreign language position being eliminated in the middle, so I believe. That's another one. It's just hard for me to understand. I think that really, I know the district's in a hard place, but when we talk about poor subjects, I think that I need poor subjects when I go to the ballot box, when I participate in my constitutional republic. I can't see how this is going to help that and help our greater country. But thank you for hearing me out, and like I said, I understand.
My name is Wesley Match. I'm a twelfth grader at Shore Tier Valley, and I live at four seven seven Orchard Spring Road. Thank you for allowing me to speak tonight. I'm talking about the same subject, eleven point two. Many teachers' commitments and achievements for our district, I feel, are not fully represented by the position they were originally hired to be. For instance, a currently designated English teacher in the high school serves as the sponsoring head of Shore Tier Valley Chapter of the NHS National Honor Society. Additionally, a currently designated phys ed teacher is responsible for the facilitation and overall production of all of CB Theater's performances. However, these accolades are lost when educators are examined under the sole lens of the designation and salary. In essence, many educators possess a unique skill set that is integral to the quote, genuine care concern policy one oh one, quote, one. As such, I firmly believe, among several of my peers, that the current choices for furloughs are not holistic in their approach, and that the teachers in present danger of losing their jobs are far from the educators in Shore Tier Valley, who are quote, considered unsatisfactory, end quote, as outlined in the BDE statutes titled twenty-four, PS Education, Section eleven dash eleven twenty-five point one. This is a stabbing issue pertaining to teacher evaluation, and as a current student, I am disappointed in the one-sided approach to the outlined eliminations and creations presented by the board. I feel that we, as a district that has spent our past inspiring excellence, have a responsibility to be better than this. I would love to see a reform to the approach we take in our efforts to maintain quality education while conserving our tightly strong budget. I feel that the best way forward is to reconsider our educators' value based on their involvement in the facilitation of extracurricular activities they were not explicitly hired to perform. Such an approach would reward educators' involvement in enriching student experience as opposed to ignoring it. After all, the extracurricular offerings at Shore Tier Valley, whether they be athletics, performing arts, humanities, or STEM, are the backbone of the quote, safe nurturing environment that inspires creativity and innovation while embracing diversity, end quote, as outlined in the district's mission statement. Effective August fifteenth, twenty twenty-five, a position will be created to specifically cater towards the educator involved with our high school's extracurricular and academic dance programs. This position was created to show value for the educators' commitment to the district and to ensure that their work will remain at Shore Tier Valley. I believe this approach should be adopted for all teachers who find themselves to be integral in their respective extracurriculars. In the example of theatrical extracurriculars, I can say with certainty that the luster of the CB Theater program would not exist if not for the current educator in charge. The way I see it, reevaluating educators' roles within the district to reflect all of their contributions is the best way to ensure that the unsung deeds of the unseen heroes are acknowledged. While the merits of running our school district like a business is a topic for another time, if Shore Tier Valley is to become a business, then its students are to become the product. And I can say without doubt in my mind that the educators behind our extracurricular offerings are what makes us.
I'm going to ask, your three minutes is long, but I just wanted to make sure you can wrap it up.
I'm done, that's all I need to say, thank you.
Good evening. I'm the last black and with a not so great voice. My name is Mary Nafoss, and I'm speaking also to the program curtailments, the furlough notices, and the HR report. I live at three five three show drive in Collier Township. I am the proud parent of a Shore Tier Valley graduate, class of twenty twenty-two, and a current junior class of twenty twenty-six, who both are heavily involved in the arts programs, band, charvelettes, dance troupe, musical, thespians, and they both thrive academically and personally because of these experiences. I'm sure everyone in this auditorium understands the budget deficit that we face. Some costs, of course, are not in our control. However, I do have some questions about recent decisions that you have made, and I hope it will cause you to pause and rethink your plan of action for the future of our school district. We have been aware of this budget crisis for a while. Why would you try to prevent some of this current situation and approve a budget proposal last school year from our former Director of Finance that would have helped this very situation? Instead, you voted six to three to not approve it. Why would you offer a sixty thousand dollar increase in salaries over a new superintendent in relation to? Why authorize a statue at the football stadium when we are in dire financial crisis? Why outsource our transportation department, which will surely cost more than in-house transportation? And by the way, it will cost us more than Justin Money Two. Why create new positions when we are eliminating programs and people? If we have teachers taking early retirement, why do we still have to eliminate twenty positions? I'm sure those people taking retirement are doing so in hopes to save those very busy young people. Why do we eliminate programs and courses when course selections have not even happened for next school year? You can't enforce the canceled course policy if they haven't even chosen their courses next year. Now is not the time to spend money on NWEA math for short test assessments. We already have standardized test data in the form of PSSAs, PLOS, SAT, and ACT scores, just to name a few. Do a deep dive into those scores and projections before training and implementing another assessment. Now is not the time for new curricular initiatives. They will have to wait until our budget is in control. Now is not the time to add another administrator. I'm sure there's more than enough work to be done, but everybody has to pull their weight, including the administration. If you're going to make class sizes bigger and ask the teachers to do more, then you have to do more with less also. Please look at how our district has looked to improve student achievement in the past, specifically with this block math that you're proposing. When my daughter was in middle school, the district mandated double math classes for everyone in the hopes that math scores would improve. They did not.
Get up and go! Get up and go! Pay attention to people speaking. Hi, Dustin Giffen, three forty-five Monver Drive, Dale, also eleven point two. I'm a lifelong resident of the district. I graduated in two thousand and five. I'm a business owner of the district, and I volunteer at the high school almost all year round. I say this to say I have invested trust in the success of this district. As a business owner, I don't envy the position you guys are in. I know a number of you out there, and I do not envy what you have to do to turn this district around, because we do have to turn this district around. On behalf of the production staff, cast crew, of somebody rotten, thank you for the acknowledgement, and I encourage all of you to come and see the show next week. They do the show for you, so please come and see it. They need your support, and if what I'm about to say is true, they need it more than ever. I speak tonight not as a business owner or as a concerned citizen, but as a concerned husband of a district employee who might get affected by this upcoming cuts. My wife, Kate Giffen, who was hired in two thousand and seven, seems to be at risk to me unfairly losing her job to somebody hired in twenty twenty-one. My wife graduated in two thousand and two as the star of the dance program. Her dream is to come back and replace her idol, Renee Kyle, in our other performing arts, dance, theater programs. She has a phys ed, English certificate, which are required to teach dance and theater classes, and however, time to time, she's not phys ed, she's not health, because she's a team player. She'll do whatever's necessary, but she was hired to teach dance and theater. One of the main priorities on this HR report is to maintain the high school dance program, right? I think it's the number one priority on the list. The high school dance program is so much more than the eleven absolutely amazing students of the extracurricular dance troupe. They are amazing. They represent this school so well at nationals, they do such an amazing job, but they are not the entire dance program. It is the hundred students from intro to dance all the way through the programs. The dance program is an extension of the performing arts program, and singers and actors who want to learn to dance so they can be better parts of the fall and spring shows. It's students wanting to visible in different ways in the dance. And as you know, the current cuts it has eliminate several phys ed positions throughout the district, and they add one phys ed, English, and communications cert holder. Reading between the lines, it seems that Mrs. Giffen's position could be eliminated or moved, and a new rule that will be added that ironically, the coach of that eleven person dance group uniquely holds all three positions. Not only would her lose her position after eighteen plus years to someone with less than four years experience, the unfair role, it would ruin the dance program not maintained. It would ruin the performing arts program. It would touch so many lives of people in here, the people I've seen in the back that I've been theater with and myself. I ask you, so many of these students here who are here tonight are in the dance class, not because it's a dance class, but because of Mrs. Giffen. but because of Mrs. Giffen. I just ask, make sure you understand what you're voting for. Many of these things, I'm sure, are right and just. This one is not right or just. Thank you.
My name's Haley, and I'm a sophomore. To begin, I also do understand that the school has many financial issues, but let's be clear. All of these decisions you're trying to make are absurd and will have real lasting consequences. Cutting teachers means bigger class sizes, less individual support, and more burnout for the staff to remain. Getting rid of programs takes away opportunities that students depend on, whether it's academic support or extracurriculars. And subcontracting transportation, that's not just about saving money. It's taking away reliable jobs from people who know and care about the students they drive every day. It honestly seems like you don't care about the students and that you're just playing a game of budget cuts at our expense. You say these cuts are necessary, but what's the actual plan for the damage they will cause? How do you expect students to succeed when there aren't enough teachers to give them the attention they need? What happens when kids who relied on these programs are left with nothing? And how do you justify risking transportation quality and safety for a budget move that may not even save money in the long run? It feels like these decisions are being made without considering the full impact it will have on people who actually experience them. This isn't just about numbers on a spreadsheet. These are real people's jobs, real students' education, and real families' daily lives. If this district is truly about supporting education, then the focus should be on solutions that strengthen our school, not tear them apart. It's time to rethink these decisions before the damage becomes irreversible. Thank you.
Anne Ludwig. Pamela Ludwig, nineteen thirteen, Albrook Lane. I'm here speaking as a resident, taxpayer, parent, two students in the district, a transportation employee, and supporter for our teachers and staff. These past few months have been embarrassing for this district, to say the least. We have still yet to receive any accountability for the misuse of funds that have happened for years. You have not been fiscally responsible, and the answer is not having a mass firing of employees. Some of you board members were here when the overspending happened, so we cannot keep hearing it was before my time. Do you realize that us taxpayers, parents, students will be here long after you are no longer on the board? It's a given that the employees won't be here. It's obvious at this point. All of the steps you are currently taking to save money is obviously not gaining any supporters for the next election. I've said it many times before, and I'll say it again, plain and simple, you don't care. Do any of you even know what the Transportation Secretary has to do on a daily basis? How much juggling is done? I'll assume no. Have any of you actually took the time to sit down and listen to any of the radio calls for an extended period of time? I'll assume again, no. What will happen when you hire a new employee to take her job and they can't handle the volume she does? You won't care because it won't be your problem. I've said it before, we are all just dollar signs on paper and wasted money to you. All of these moves will start to make this district deteriorate. Property values will diminish, and people will stop moving here for the beautiful district we once had. Justifying a mass firing instead of cutting higher up salaries is the only answer you see. It was my understanding that you were here to listen to the taxpayers, residents, and hear for the best interest of the students. It looks like this is a huge game, and you have all been willing to just roll the dice, and it's shameful and heartbreaking. The residents and employees are not stupid. The writing is on the wall with this word, and it always has been. Your employees are good, honest people, and most of you out there right now cannot say the same. I know you won't ever do it, but I challenge you to look at every employee on the chopping block in the eye and tell them each are fired because we're broke, all while awarding lucrative bids for services and programs not needed as conflict of interest to your own.
Wake up, man! Thank you!
Samantha Fulmer.
Good evening, Samantha Fulmer, fourteen fifty-two, Green Tree Road, Scott Township. I'm just gonna cut right to it. Let's not pretend that tonight's vote is anything but a formality. The decision has already been made behind closed doors without genuine regard for the students, teachers, or the community you were elected to serve. Led by board president Derek Mariano, Louise Hune, Herb Olinger, Kate Drury, Jeff Chora, and Ed Rosky, you have made it clear that your priorities do not lie with the students in this district.
I'm just saying that.
I'm just saying you, we have a policy on that, and if you'd like to talk to us, just speak to us. That's fine.
That's fine. I'm just going to go ahead and vote. The community is well aware that the majority of this board exists for one reason and one reason only, to avoid raising taxes at all costs. It's never been about responsible financial management, never about putting students first. It has always been about protecting your own political interests, no matter the consequences. That became even clearer today when K D K A quoted our new superintendent as saying, "This aggressive approach is to address budget concerns without impacting taxpayers." That says everything we need to know. This isn't about what's doing what's best for kids, teachers, or the district. It's about pushing through whatever reckless cuts are necessary so you don't have to take any heat for raising taxes. Furloughing teachers is the exact opposite of student-centered budgeting. If you actually cared about putting students first, you would have exhausted every other option before gutting classrooms. You would have looked at the bloated administrative spending that keeps growing while student resources shrink. You would have cut the lucrative outside contracts that always seem to benefit the same familiar names, your friends, your allies, the people you bring in to profit off this district, while teachers lose their jobs and students lose opportunities. And if you truly wanted to act responsibly, you would have raised taxes to the Act One index last year and again this year, a predictable, sustainable move that could have prevented this entire situation, as our Director of Finance said last year. But instead, you've made a deliberate choice to sacrifice teachers, the very people who make education possible, while protecting yourselves, your connections, and your priorities. And let's be clear, this is not just about teachers. Our bus drivers aides and support staff are just as critical to this district as anyone else. They are the ones making sure students arrive at school safely, assisting those who need extra help, and keeping daily operations running. Yet, time and time again, it's the people who work directly with kids who take the hit while making these reckless decisions continue to protect your own interests. This isn't.
Ma'am, your three minutes are up.
This is my last.
Please finish off. Yeah, please finish off.
This is my last. If the community sees it, you may have the votes to push this through tonight, but don't think for a second that the people will forget. We will remember this portrayal of students and educators when it's time to vote for the new board members and demand accountability. Thank you.
Next. Next is Lassiana Payne.
Hello to everybody and hello to the school board. My name is Lassiana Payne. I am eighteen years old, and I would like to discuss the Human Resources Report Title eleven point two. When I first got to C V, my parents took me here for a better life. I was an African-American student in an all-African-American school where there were no resources and I couldn't even enroll into gifted programs. My parents decided to pull me out because they knew that I was gifted and that I needed more resources here at Sharters Valley. Everybody who knows me here has known me since I was eight years old, and the bestest friends I could ever have are on this board and are in this room. When I wanted to learn Spanish when I was eight years old, because I loved Selena, at this very school, ahora yo hablo español. I learned Spanish here in this school, and those very things that you want to cut are the reason why people like me thrive in our community. The human resources, my sister is a six-year-old autistic girl. She is in the primary school, learning. All of the cuts that you are trying to make inactively take away what she wants to do and takes away her ability to thrive. Will you sit here and watch children, like all of us, no matter the background, struggle because of your own selfish reason? I hope not. The athletics department once got recognition at this first part of the meeting. I would like to do the same for the teachers. My mathematics teachers, as I can say, my math scores have never been high as before until this point, are the reason I got into my dream school. Without taking calculus, Pitt and schools like Duquesne would not accept me, and they are the reason I got in. When all of the teachers here were supporting me while everybody else wasn't, I had all of these teachers behind my back, and they are the reason, besides academics, that I have my social circle and people to confide in. When it comes to statistics, it was said in two thousand and nineteen that we were the number one school in Allegheny County. That has obviously gone down. We had a two thousand and nineteen ninety-eight percent graduation rate. This will obviously go down if our teachers are being defunded. And in two thousand and nineteen, we had a three-point-four average GPA. This will again clearly go down, and we will go from an A-minus school to a C-minus school. It has been said by my indigenous ancestors that when the last tree has been cut down, the last fish has been caught, and the last river has been poisoned, only then can we realize that we cannot eat money. To that, I say to you, our C V motto is to inspire excellence. So when our last programs are cut, the funding is exceeded, and you cannot bring back our wonderful staff. Only then will you realize that you cannot inspire excellence if you are taking everything away that achieves it.
Am I on? Ash Murphy, one five seven, Orchard Spring. I am here to express my concern with the H R report. We all know that the school is facing a nine-million-dollar deficit, and this board has historically voted against all the other solutions to generate more revenue. You did not raise taxes to Act One levels, denying the district eighteen million dollars in revenue over time. You voted against offering the five teachers who sought the early retirement incentive last year, denying the district seven hundred ten thousand dollars a year in savings. You voted against establishing a new agreement with the Providence Point, denying the district six million dollars in revenue over the next fifteen years. All of these things could have been solutions that would have removed the need to eliminate our classes and our programs, and our teachers and staff wouldn't have to lose their jobs. And I would just like to point out that the majority of the people on this list are not just C V employees. They're C V taxpayers, and on top of that, they're C V parents. Producing teachers not only means larger class sizes and less one-on-one attention to our students, but also greater chances for disruption and less learning time. How can you expect our students to progress at the rate we need them to, to bring our performance levels back up to where they used to be, when the teachers have to focus on these oversized, ripping-at-the-scenes classrooms? Additionally, where is our sense of community when we require new hires? Why are we always promoting these new hires coming in without the district when we obviously have well-paying staff? They are all paid very well for a reason. They're all very talented. Why are we not promoting from within? Why are they all coming from the same school district too? Why are we not under a spending freeze right now? Why are we eliminating our classes and our teachers are losing our jobs, yet we're spending frivolously on nonessential items? Also, for the R F P for security, we already do have a wonderful person who is tirelessly working to protect our students at the primary school, as well as the wonderful officers from Scott and Collier who are protecting our students, and I'd be very unfortunate to lose them. Additionally, our school just hired a superintendent at one of the highest-paid salaries of the state. We're not even in a city. And they were hired when we were at a one-point-nine-million deficit budget with a projection of nine million for the next school year. So why is that?
Leila Asbury, eleventh grade. I am commenting on Agenda Item eleven point two. I stand before you today as a board representative for half the school year, but my involvement in these meetings began long before my appointment. As a freshman, I attended meetings when teachers went a year without a contract. Last spring, I was present when tensions ran high over hiring a superintendent, all while also attempting to balance the budget. Now I am here where teachers are being furloughed and our classes are being cut. At the high school alone, eleven teaching positions are being eliminated. That means eleven dedicated men and women are either retiring or being furloughed. The classes they leave behind, now up for elimination, are handed off to teachers already stretched to their limits. Does that seem fair? Take social studies, a department already at a disadvantage, having a teacher retire at the end of the two thousand and twenty-two, two thousand and twenty-three school year and never replace will now shrink by two more. How many of those classes will be handed off, and how many will be taken away entirely? I am not a scientist nor a mathematician. I am a historian. I want as many social studies classes as possible to take, and I know a similar thought process is shared by my classmates in their respective interests. I fully understand that the goal of these changes is to eliminate the school's debt and improve test scores. However, I strongly believe that cutting subjects students are passionate about, subjects that inspire their future careers, will do more harm than good. Before this meeting, I spoke with countless students who are deeply concerned about these decisions. Seniors, though they won't be here to experience these changes firsthand, worry about the loss of the very classes that shaped their ambitions. Meanwhile, freshmen, sophomores, and juniors will bear the brunt of these cuts with one to three years of school still ahead of them. And let's not forget the incoming freshmen who will step into a school that no longer offers the opportunities that wants to find it. With these incoming freshmen, how many of them do you think planned on taking German two and eventually three, or maybe even go to four, that now have to rethink their plans? As someone who took German for three years and was secretary of the German Club, I knew I was not looking at a failing program, just one that needed more time to thrive once again. Ironically, the board approved of new materials for the German classes last year. Now all of those books will go to waste. The example list could go on, and with none of them can I think of good outcomes. And I think the sheer amount of people here tonight stand to show that. My support goes out to every single one of you. We are doing the right thing by being here. Board, I hope. Board, I hope you may listen to all of us and make a decision that is in the best interest of teachers and students alike. We elected you to serve us, not to act on your own accord. Thank you.
Alexis Saretti.
Alexis Saretti, 276 Sunrise Drive, Collier. Hi, Alexis Saretti, 276 Sunrise Drive, Collier. I want to talk about 11.2 also, but I want to first recognize the students that came tonight and say thank you. On the days when I'm feeling bleak about this nation, I'll remember this night, so thanks for coming. I'm here tonight to talk about furloughing teachers, cutting programs, and eliminating classes. I'm against it. I'm against it because this was not inevitable. It didn't have to be this way. What has been positioned by this majority board as tough cost-cutting decisions is just the result of a series of uninformed and poor choices over years. The tough decisions were the decisions that you opted to forego last spring. When presented with the opportunity to bring in revenue for our school district, you opted not to do so. Read my lips, "No new taxes" has been a slogan since I was in public school. I know I'm dating myself here. It sounds great as a soundbite, but it's not a sound strategy unless your primary concern is getting reelected. The school districts around us responded appropriately to inflation and the running out of COVID-19 funding. They listened to the state and raised taxes to Act One levels. This board would not do it. Instead of choosing a politically unpopular but sustainable strategy, they weren't courageous enough. Unless you're a teacher in a classroom daily, you have no idea what our CV teachers do every day. From my own childhood experience over the years, I know them to be part nurse, part psychologist, parental advisor, and dealing with a whole host of other things like large class sizes and kids with learning challenges. All of this while being expected to teach students to ace state tests and motivate them to do their best every day. It didn't have to be this way. Teachers didn't have to lose their jobs, and kids didn't have to lose their favorite instructors, classes, and activities they love. This board chose this path despite being told many times to pursue other solutions. They refused to listen to the experts who warned them that they needed to raise taxes, sacrificing eighteen million in revenue over time. They voted against establishing a new agreement with Providence Point, a senior facility that would have resulted in more than six million in revenue over fifteen years. So here we are. We may not have a lot of sway today, but board seats have term limits. A primary election's coming in May and then another in the general. All of the people here cared enough to come, and they'll tell others. We won't forget this when it's time to vote. So the very decisions you've made to retain your board seat will probably result in you losing it.
Steve Anderson. Steve Anderson. Marissa DiBello.
Hi there, I'm Marissa DiBello, I live on 1559, it's right now. First of all, I would say to the board that this is like a tough thing to drop on people with a day or so notice, and it's possible that I'm out of the loop and that this has been in more circles and has been under discussion with the specific cuts that you're mentioning. And I would like to thank Mitch Fontani for always posting updates on social media. It's very difficult to keep up on all of this with so many other things in the world that you need to keep up on, especially because like our township meetings are on Tuesdays as well, and so we rely on this kind of information. To the board and the parents and the community, I would say that this is not a surprise to me, unfortunately, because a couple of years ago when we were going through teacher negotiations, the board said that we were going to face financial strain, program cuts, and furloughs. And here we are. And the third young man that spoke kind of made me rethink some of the comments that I wanted to make, and he made me think that we need to get creative with the way that we approach getting closer to a balanced budget. But I also am aware, because I read the contracts, that the board is kind of tied as to what furloughs and what teacher positions can be eliminated because of the contracts. And so I would like to be able to see, I would like to see more information, really, to explain to all of us as to why these positions were chosen over others and what have you. Because to me, it is kind of inevitable. If they're saying that taxes, that a simple reason taxes wouldn't solve these financial problems, well, I think it would be beneficial to learn what other options we have and what other eliminations that we have. And I especially would also think about, we have a very top-heavy teacher pay scale, and why would we not consider early retirement and that sort of thing? Because thirty teachers at the low end of the scale is only fifteen teachers at the top of the scale. And that's not to say that any one group of teachers deserves or should be furloughed over another. But again, it's something to consider and it's a way to be creative. So I would like to see more information on how these decisions were made.
Mr. DiBello, just to your point about the early retirement incentive, there was an incentive that was passed. The teachers have until Thursday to accept that. To date, I believe we have over twenty-five teachers that have taken the URI. So it was the most aggressive URI in the county. And we are up to, I believe, twenty-six as of the start of this meeting.
Next is Leslie B. Tony.
Hi, Leslie B. Tony, 256 Isner Avenue, Bridgeville. Thank you for letting me speak. I'm not sure that I can follow what some of these students said today, but I'm going to try, and I'm going to speak on 11.2 as well as the rest of the people have spoken. Before I get to the point, I do have a question here, and I know you're not going to answer, but have you ever looked at the crest that's on the webpage under "What Our School's About"? The crest was developed a few years ago. It's in collaboration with students, faculty, administrators. It stands for Integrity, Community, Innovation, and Academia. Today, I'm not seeing a lot of integrity sitting up on this board as we continue to vote six to three against items and, excuse me, against things that benefit our students and our faculty, and the students, and taxpayers. Additionally, if you look at the crest and what everything means, I'm going to call out a few of those. Blue, truth and loyalty. Have we been truthful here today? A student came up to talk to you about an email that teachers got. Truth? Yes. Defunded? No. Integrity, the definition, doing the right thing when nobody is looking. And all we see from a majority of this board is backyard deals, backhanded deals, hiring people from a previous district that are coming on board. Let's see, we're eliminating from teachers to, let me look at this list again. Getting rid of a German teacher, which will benefit a student, so that we can hire a confidential, I'm not sure what that means, secretary for the administrative. You know, that confidential secretary is coming from Woodland Hills as the transportation supervisor. She's coming as from the transportation services coordinator. A position that the school, I believe their buses were outsourced, just going to say. The other thing I have to say about that transparency and doing everything, I'm hoping the secretary has better secretarial skills that are happening today, because we want to hold our students and teachers to the highest standards. The communication that comes from this board in this district is appalling. From this date, February 17th, two-hour delay on Thursday, February 18th. I'm sorry, February 18th would have been the next day, and Thursday would have been February 20th. An email to teachers today and to parents that said there's a two-hour delay tonight, tomorrow? Oh, I'm sorry, that was for the board meeting, because we can't go back and, you know, put an accurate email together. Again, you want to hold teachers and students accountable, then you need to hold yourselves accountable, have integrity, do the right thing when nobody's looking, and have to do the right thing when we are looking. Get off your phones, get off the back-and-forth texts, I see you in three minutes. That's all I have.
Next is Nicole Costello. Nicole Costello.
Hi, I'm Nicole Costello. I live at Route 32 St. Clair Street. I am a 2006 graduate of CV and a parent of a current ninth grader. I am also here to speak on 11.2. First off, I want to say that I don't agree with the proposed furloughs in general. I understand that the budget is in trouble, and I understand it puts the district in a tough situation. However, cuts to curriculum and teachers should never be the first, second, or even third option considered. All avenues should be considered before taking away from our children's education. But in particular, I want to comment that cutting German as a foreign language course at the school, especially without any sort of phased approach, would be extremely detrimental to the affected students. My daughter is currently in German, too. If it's eliminated beginning with the next school year, she'll need to start over in a different language. That means that by the time she graduates, she'll only have three years of that language under her belt. While many colleges accept three years of one language, four is considered desirable, and top-tier institutions even prefer it. This could harm her chances of getting into the college of her choice. She's just one student of many. I'm sure this situation would affect many other students in similar situations across all of the positions that are potentially being cut and the curriculum being cut. Please do write by our students, consider all alternatives and solutions, don't make hasty decisions that can seriously impact their education because you think saving a few dollars is worth the potential consequences. We are trying to teach our children to make informed decisions about their futures. Make your own informed decisions. Choose your students, teachers, and staff over taxpayers. And I say that as a taxpayer. Thank you.
Next is Pam Kuka.
Hi, I'm Pam Buchi, 442 Presley Street, oh, your township. I have a tenth grader, but a tenth here, and I also have a son that graduated in 2017. I want to discuss how important that the theater and the arts programs are to this school. Because my son, Devin Moore, has trophies in the case. He won Gene Kelly Awards, but he also got a full scholarship to Juilliard. And that's now, he graduated from Juilliard, and they offered him to go on for his master's degree on that full scholarship. He has a master's degree, and now he's traveling the world and successful. And this was the foundation, right here. These teachers were the foundation. Him, Giffen nurtures these kids. They become a family. It's not, they learn core values for life. It's not just about extracurricular. Core classes are amazing, but not everybody is good at sports, but some of them are good at the arts. It's important, it's just as important as the sports. It shouldn't be cut. And the nurturing that these kids get, and I'll tell you that Devin would not be where he is today without those teachers, without the orchestra teacher, the chorus teacher, the acting teachers, the directors. They put their heart and soul and their own money into this. Him and Dustin put so much money and love and care, and like, they all become their children. And to see that lost would be heartbreaking, because some of these kids, when they leave here, that's what they remember, those lifelong friendships. And to cut programs like that, this is why I stayed in this school district with a very talented child. Everyone thought he was going to go to cabin. I said, "Chargers Valley doesn't cut programs like this, they're wonderful with it, and they thrive." There's trophies all over the school. There should not just sports, there's trophies all over the school because of those teachers. So please, think about that and just remember that that's a family to these kids, and they shouldn't lose that. They shouldn't lose it.
Next is Adam Ruberts. Adam Ruberts.
Hello, Adam Ruberts, ninth grade student, speaking on Agenda Item 11.2. As a member of the German club and class, I am heavily hurt by the decision to eliminate the only high school German teacher. He is one of the hardest-working teachers that I know as he makes sure every student is able to accomplish their German goals and never wastes time. As a student in my German class, wait, sorry. Anytime a student in my German class asks if we can end early, he points to a wood carving that reads "Maximizing Family Tax Dollars Since 2001." That is how serious he is about our time in class. He is dedicated to providing the best German education to his students, and this is an example of how the decisions a majority of the board is making is he absolute wrong decision. I was a member of the Best Buddies in National Junior Honor Society in middle school, active in select chorus, active for the past four years in CV Theater, and active in fall, winter, and spring sports. I love being a student in CV, and my heart is now breaking. No one is winning here, please stop hurting our school district. I ask that you hear what I'm saying and the voices of others tonight and change your decision. I hope you understand why your actions will do to this community and the students of Chargers Valley. Thank you.
Next is Olivia Maston Williams.
Hello, I'm Olivia Maston Williams. I'm a junior, and I'm also commenting on Point 11.2. I am here tonight because I share the same sentiments as my fellow students. Everyone in this room, including myself, are worried about the furloughs and class cuts. I believe that this decision will negatively impact students' education quality. There are plans to maintain twenty AP courses, but how will this be achieved after the furloughs and retirements? To my understanding, there are very little plans to bring in replacement teachers. So the only solution that I can think of is that the remaining teachers will be responsible for the classes and courses that the teachers that are leaving behind. We already have teachers who take care of more than one course, and by piling onto their schedules, it will cut into teachers' resources and time available to their students. I've spoken to a teacher at my school, and regularly, teachers have been allotted six-period maximum for teaching. They also have one prep period, one lunch period, and one common planning. If a teacher is given another course to handle, then the time they need to eat and to do lesson prep is out the window. Then, what is most likely to happen is that our guidance counselors will squeeze as many students into a single class period as they can. For reference, the recommended amount of students in an AP class, set by the College Board, is sixteen per class. For example, in my school, we have two AP macroeconomics periods. One of them is full of thirty students, four of which at the beginning of the year had to be transferred to another period. Our teachers can only handle so much, but, you know, causing packed classrooms puts too much stress on our educators and creates an unsuitable learning environment for students. for students. The language of the article concerns me, especially calling the list "the first round of furloughs." This tells me two things. One, the board sees these departments as the most expendable when they provide the most useful skills and resources for our students, like the Family Consumer Sciences, Special Head, AET, and PLTW programs, which to my understanding have zero replacements right now. Two, it tells me that the board can and will make further cuts in the future. I and my fellow students are afraid to see what's next. I think all of the CV Theater is here. My mom is a teacher in the district and since I've heard about the furloughs, I've been dreading about her losing her job. This doesn't just affect the high school, it affects the middle school too. Why are we cutting Spanish programs from the intermediate school to make way for a computer science program for children who spend their entire day in front of screens? It is not fair to them. I have one final remark, I have one final remark. I'd like to state to the board that not only my peers and Ivy students next year, but we will also be voting in the next election.
Next is Denise O'Neill.
My name's Denise O'Neill, I live at eleven ten Sarah Street. I would first like to thank the students and the wonderful teachers who are part of Chartered Valley. My children are alumni and the caring and compassion and nurturing that my children must receive, have received has been very, very beneficial to them. Our current curriculum offers many opportunities and is on par comparatively with the surrounding school districts of Upper St. Clair, South Fayette, Moon, Mount Lebanon, and Montour. The bio med program was introduced to CV in the 2016-2017 school year and that has added many benefits to the students. One of the 2020 graduates did very well and has just been accepted to Pitt Medical School. Another person is a sophomore, Carlo, and is highly succeeding and doing much better than many of the biology children that are also in her other labs. She's exceeding them. Another 2024 graduate received several scholarships and is currently attending Duquesne. Just like the bus situation, if the curriculum becomes limited, that devalues our properties. And while some students are more left-brained and are more math and science-based, other children are more artistically talented. My daughter knew Devon Moore. Having classes like art, drama, band, and acting allow these litmus students who are not athletes or math and science-based students to thrive. My daughter was in showband, Spring Musical, Anime Club, and had several art classes and now studies architecture and is made dean's list several times. The United States is one of the largest countries that deals in a global economy. How can you consider cutting social studies in Germany? Germany is one of the most influential countries in the European theater. Also, while AI is good, it's not the same as a teacher. AI cannot read a child who is suffering, having a problem, or needs additional help. And sports are also good, and evidently at the beginning of this meeting, you showed how well the sports program is, so why cut them? With regard to the bus situation, it has been shown that outsourcing is more of a problem than it is a solution. When my daughter was in band, during one of their away games, they had a bus situation. Within fifteen minutes, a new bus was acquired and they were on their way and on time to that game and were not late for their performance. Also, we loved every bus driver that we've ever had because they knew who we are and they understood our children. Lastly, it is more important for the students to be heard than to worry about taxes. You evidently wasted a lot of our money and our votes will count. I will say as a four-year band parent, I went to every single game except the game at Woodland Hills because I feared for my own safety. The children, the children had to put their windows up a half a mile out and they had a police escort from the bus to the field.
Okay, ma'am, give three minutes up if you could wrap, please, thanks.
All I, the last thing I have to say to you, Mr. Castanza, is my understanding is that you're trying to bring a blot of Woodland Hills to CV. I would prefer the CV not be the Woodland Hills or the South Hills. If you love Woodland Hills that much, please go back to Woodland Hills.
Next is Gerard Mahon.
Please get my name right. I'm the father of a freshman who is actually here tonight. I would give her name, but from what I understand, from the gentleman that spoke earlier, you plan on disciplining her, disciplining her and her and the other students here tonight? I guess stitches, stitches get stitches with this one, is that right? Let me ask you, are you proud of your efforts? You've made this district a laughingstock. Look at the media here, Jen Brasser from KKA. The only time you hear about this district on the news these days is when it's something bad. Ultimately, that falls on you, not the students, not the bus drivers, you. I have, I have associates that live in and have kids in other districts like Pittsburgh Public and Stone Rocks, both that are far worse performing than this district, that laugh when I tell them my child goes to Chartered Valley. Again, you've made a laughingstock of this district. You cut a lot of programs and staff because of your sheer incompetence and criminally negligent financial mismanagement that you have created. And I ask you, are you, do you seriously think you deserve to be re-elected? Frankly, if I would have known the kind of ineptitude running this district existed back when my child was a kindergartner, I would have never had her go here. You hired a super that washed out of every other district he's run and you paid him more than the supers of Mount Lebanon and USC, districts that actually are well-run and well-respected. I've heard multiple solutions to this financial issue presented here tonight that have not been pursued. Why is that? Who are you protecting? Who is paying for your campaigns? Who is pulling your strings? My ninety-five-year-old parents live in a neighboring district and that was a difficult decision. The school district made the tough decision to raise taxes. The end result paid off with the district being one of the best districts and most well-respected in the country. Why can't we have that here? Why don't you have the same courage that that school board had? Why do you, and also, why do you insist on operating in secrecy?
Sir, you're way past your free sentence, you could just wrap it up.
Okay. What kind of secrecy, the kind of secrecy that would make North Korea jealous? What are you afraid of, losing reelection? Those spine cowards. Do the right thing instead of limiting jobs and programs. Do the right thing. Thank you.
Thank you, we have been more honest.
I'd like to announce that we have an executive session prior to this public meeting to discuss personnel, legal, and safety matters. On to the superintendent's report.
Thank you, Mr. President. First, I have an informational item for the board. At the conclusion of this meeting, I am asking for your permission to begin to build the plan of studies for the high schools so our course selections may begin. I do not want to have to wait until the next voting meeting, how we typically would approve, board approve, plan of studies before our course selections happen. So I'm asking for your permission, just informationally now, to build that so that we can start scheduling and then ratify the adoption of our plan of studies at the next voting meeting. Does anybody have any questions or issues with that?
So we wouldn't have a motion on it, you just want assurances that they can go forward to permit scheduling?
Yes. And then I would ratify it at the next voting meeting with a plan of studies that would formally be adopted, but it would be a ratification because we would already put that into action so we can start selecting courses.
Yeah, does anybody want to say anything or anybody against?
Is that going to be available to all board members or just some?
You know how you know the whole board. You know I always email the entire board, so absolutely, you would always go, like everything else I said now. Okay, so the five point two. We have our student representatives, Brady and Leila, with our update.
Last week, about me and Brady and a few other students who are juniors and seniors attended a meeting with Dr. Castagna to discuss our, well, his panel that he is wishing to put together of students to try and better understand what our day-to-day lives are like in the district and specifically in high school. So the first meeting, I will say, quickly jump to what this very meeting is about tonight, but I do think that it is very important we have this program because students deserve to have their opinions heard. We are the ones that are being affected. Now, I'll go to my report. Next Tuesday, High School Student Council will be hosting a recognition breakfast for Panera, from Panera for the athletes who have excelled this winter season. The Spring Musical Something Rotten is a comedy musical that tells the story of two brothers, Nick and Nigel Bottom, trying to write a hit play while being overshadowed by Shakespeare. Tickets are currently on sale and available to purchase on the link in the CV Theater Instagram bio and website. The show is on March fifth, sixth, seventh, and eighth. Support CV Theater and make sure to attend this year's Spring Musical. On March eleventh, the Students Against Destructive Decisions Club, SAB, will be conducting an all-day student-led traffic safety program at the primary school with the oversight of PE teacher at the primary school, Ms. Estadico. They are also working on setting up a reading day in April to share stories and activities about nutrition and mindfulness. And finally, AP Research students are in the final stages of their research design for the College Board and they would like to thank everyone who has completed surveys and interviews to assist them in their project. This is all. Thank you.
Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. Doctor Sable kind of stole my thunder here this evening with his recognitions in the meeting, but I just want to say that our spring sports will kick off at the high school on March third and I'm at the middle school on March fifth. And that our superintendent panel meeting that we had last week, we also discussed a lot of important safety things and I know that's a very important issue to students, parents, and teachers alike, and I think we're making some progress there.
On to the solicitors' report.
I have nothing outside the items we discussed in executive session. Thank you.
On to the informational agenda. Shasta, Mrs. Sexton. Nothing to report? Okay. Pathfinder, Mr. Oliger.
Two items, we voted on the AIU's agreement that basically states the rules and responsibilities of both the AIU Pathfinders, we accepted that agreement, and we took and voted on the items for summer projects. That's the extent.
The Allegheny Intermediate Unit, Mrs. Traynor.
Thank you. The Allegheny Intermediate Unit approves students to be able to participate in field experiences from Slippery Rock University and Baylor Universities. These are experiences within the AIU school-based classrooms, which are typically Head Start classrooms, Pathfinder, and other schools within our districts. Coming up with the AIU is a meet the candidates evening on March twenty-seventh at six PM. This will be televised live. You will be able to hear from all the candidates for the five positions at the AIU as they present speeches. The legislative forum will immediately follow on March twenty-seventh at seven PM. This is an opportunity to ask questions of our local legislatures and have discussions about education in our area. The Board and Executive Leadership Council workshop will be June eighteenth from five to eight PM at the AIU offices. I will be participating in that. It's the time when we talk about the AIU's belief statements and their goals and policies moving forward. Thank you.
I think that Allegheny County, what did you call that? We should post that on our website so everybody can participate. That was done, I believe, that's done by John Delano or somebody.
He is the moderator, yes. It is both in live, it is in person and it is also remote. You can register through the AIU and provide questions if you have them.
Okay, moving on to the board meeting minutes. May I, I'm sorry, Mr. Chora?
You're welcome. You're welcome. Thank you. Welcome, everyone. Parkway, we are open house is March fourth. We used to rotate it to all the other school, the other twelve school districts. We had to stop that because we had such a huge attendance last time. We have to move it to Rock Morse. I think we had over fifteen hundred parents. Also, we approved our summer camp for the incoming ninth-grade students. This is all for eighth graders from all the twelve school districts. They come to a camp for two days and they go through the whole Parkway experience. Also, we had fifteen students to make the top honor roll out there. And we also did three surveys. We did one for the parents, one for the students, and one for all of our dad. The parents' survey and the students' surveys came back extremely, extremely high. They're asked twelve questions and every one of the questions came back ninety to ninety-seven percent, so we were, we were very happy about that. That's all I have. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Moving on to the board meeting minutes. May I have a motion to approve the regular board meeting minutes for February eleventh, twenty twenty-five?
Just one clarification, we want the minutes to reflect the correct amount per week for security. I know that came up in discussion during last meeting, the decimal point was in the wrong position. It is thirty-three sixty per week, not the other amount, so just make sure the record reflects that. Thank you.
Yeah, just to clarify, so Kelly, you'll need to change those per week, okay? Because it's incorrect. Okay, thank you. Any other discussion on this item? All in favor?
Aye.
Anybody opposed? The motion passes. May I have a motion to approve Noah Woodward, Chanel Paige, and Leanna Baisser to travel to the Wayneburg University from March nineteenth, twenty twenty-five through March twenty-first, twenty twenty-five to attend the PMDA Regional Choir Festival?
So move.
Motion made by Mr. Chora, second by Mr. Montani. Any discussion on this item? All in favor?
Aye.
Anybody opposed? The motion passes. May I have a motion to approve the following fundators for the athletic department. The Second Annual Chartered Valley Athletics The Second Annual Chargers Valley Athletics Top Gold Fundraiser on July 10th, and the Seasonal Digital Media Guides Fundraiser Program run by the athletic department? Motion made by Ms. Heen, may I have a second? Second by Mr. Tura. Any discussion on this item? All in favor?
Aye.
Anybody opposed? The motion passes. May I have a motion to approve the furlough resolution as per the district solicitor?
So moved.
Motion made by Ms. Heen, may I have a second? Second by Ms. Torrey. Any discussion on this item?
Yeah, I'd like to make a few comments and questions to the audience. Although I appreciate your passion in trying to do the right thing, there's a few questions that do need answer. And I asked them this summer, nobody had any answers for them. Number one, where were all of you when the previous board raised taxes seven straight million without, without cutting in expense? Where were you when the previous board and superintendent squandered a $39 million surplus? Where were you all when hundreds of thousands of dollars of change orders were, when change orders were paid, some not even aware to the board, but cost the school district lots of money? Also, there's been numerous comments.
Guys, can I say something, please? Can I say something?
Please, 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 Ed.
Okay.
Please, let's, let's hear from the board member, Mr. Montani, if you'd like to speak. Please give him the courtesy of speaking.
Folks, I, look, I disagree with Ed on many, many things, okay? He has a right to speak. He has a right to say his opinion. Please let him say it. Thank you.
Also, there's been many snide comments directed to our new superintendent, Mr. Kostagna. Mr. Kostagna and his team has made more improvements for this school district than the previous, than the, than the previous superintendent and solicitor did in six years. We also have a new solicitor, I like to refer to him as Mr. Cahoonies, Mr. Biggah, and he's tried to run these meetings like business meetings. And again, you can yell at me all you want, it doesn't affect me because what I've noticed is everybody's an activist out there. There's no real critical thinking formed in your people. You just, you just, just continue.
Excuse me, let's please be respectful.
You just leave, wrap it up, Ed, and let's move on. You just continue to throw punches. To the gentleman, to the gentleman. To the gentleman who keeps calling my name, after the meeting, I'll be on the floor to answer any questions that you have. Thank you.
Please, please. There's a motion. All in favor? Do we have a roll call, please? Kelly, please call the roll. Kelly, call the roll, please.
Mr. Broski?
Yes.
Mr. Cora?
Yes.
Mrs. Torrey?
Yes.
Mr. Oliger?
Yes.
Mr. Montani?
No.
Mrs. Sexton? Mrs. Sexton?
No.
Mrs. Traynor?
No.
And Dr. Mariano?
Uh, yes. May I have a motion to approve the Human Resources Report for February 25th, 2025? Motion made by Ms. Heen, may I have a second? Second by Mr. Broski. Any discussion on this item?
Roll call vote, please.
Roll call vote, please. Call the roll, Kelly.
Mr. Broski?
Yes.
Mr. Cora?
Yes.
Mrs. Torrey?
Yes.
Mr. Oliger?
Yes.
Mr. Montani?
No.
Mrs. Sexton?
No.
Mrs. Traynor?
No.
Ms. Heen?
And Dr. Mariano?
Uh, yes. May I have a motion?
Okay, okay, please, they're trying to conduct business.
May I have a motion to approve the settlement agreement with employee number 1053? Motion made by Ms. Heen, second? Second by Mr. Tura. Any discussion on this item? All in favor?
Aye.
Anybody opposed? The motion passes. May I have a motion to approve the memorandum of understanding with employee number 3364? Motion made by Ms. Heen, may I have a second?
Second.
Second by Ms. Torrey. Any discussion on this item? All in favor?
Aye.
Anybody opposed? The motion passes. May I have a motion to approve the contract with the Scoring Factory to utilize the district's facilities beginning March 1st, 2025 and ending March 29th, 2028? Motion made by Ms. Heen, may I have a second? Second by Mr. Montani. Any discussion on this item? All in favor?
Aye.
Anybody opposed? The motion passes. May I have a motion to approve the first read of Policy 626 for pyramid federal programs? The threshold numbers were raised for 2025. There are no other changes to the current policy.
So moved.
Motion made by Mr. Truch. Mrs. Traynor, second by Ms. Heen. Any discussion on this item? All in favor?
Aye.
Anybody opposed? The motion passes. May I have a motion to approve the advertisement for request for proposal for insurance brokerage and risk management services?
Second.
Motion made by Ms. Heen, second by Mr. Tura. Any discussion on this item? All in favor?
Aye.
Anybody opposed? The motion passes. May I have a motion to approve the advertisement for request for proposal for security services? Motion made by Ms. Heen, may I have a second? Second by Mr. Broski. Any discussion on this item? Yes.
All right, so I have a quick question on this. I, I've read through this RFP a couple times. I do not see anywhere in it where it mentions RSROs and, and it states, you know, the, the list of positions that would be involved with this proposal, what their duties would be. I'm curious as to why there's no protocol listed in this RFP with regard to how they interact with RSROs. I want to know if anybody's talked to RSROs before putting this together, because RSROs are the backbone of our security apparatus. So I would like to know. Thank you.
Uh, Mr. Montini, yes. I speak often with the SROs and we meet as a security team very often. The security agreement with the SROs is completely separate of this and is in place. The current agreement we have with Collier and Scott, I believe, is in place until the end of next year, so we still be here and a half. This would be in addition to that agreement, does not impact the SROs. Agreement they have in school does not impact our role they have. It's certainly not replacing a police officer, I promise you that. This is just to get numbers for the board for multiple companies to be able to submit proposals and for the board to be able to review those proposals and attach possible costs to the initiative.
I, I do respect that. I am going to, I'm going to vote no on this, and, and the reason for that is I have long believed that the best thing for our security apparatus at our school district and the first step that would need taken, that would best fit CV would be for the addition of a fourth SRO for four buildings. And so that's just my opinion. I believe that should be the first step taken in that regard, and that's why I'm going to vote no. Could we have a roll call on this too, please?
Certainly. Kelly, please call the roll.
Mr. Broski? Mr. Cora?
Yes.
Mrs. Torrey?
Yes.
Mr. Oliger?
Yes.
Mr. Montani? Mrs. Sexton? Mrs. Traynor?
No.
Ms. Heen? And Dr. Mariano?
Yes. May I have a motion to approve the advertisement for request for proposal for unified door access and camera system? Motion made by Ms. Heen, may I have a second? Second by Ms. Torrey. Any discussion on this item? Mr. Montani, then Mrs. Traynor?
Sorry. Go ahead, Matt, join in for you.
I, I was going to just ask who all would be utilizing this security system with all these cameras? Is that going to be the SROs? Is that going to be a, a proposed security firm? Or who's going to access all of this technology? And is there going to be like some type of control room for them to monitor what's going on? Like, how is that all going to add up?
So all the new technology is web-based, all right? It's cloud-based, so there's no, it's not on a server. It can be accessed remotely, be accessed at laptops. The current situation, like if you go to the primary school, RSRO has a setup where they can see all cameras, like a command station. We ultimately would like to have that, eyes proactively watching cameras before incidents happen, not look backs like we currently do. So yes, but there would be multiple locations because part of this is door access controls. So if a door is propped open, an alert would go to the head custodian, it would go to the SRO, it would go to that principal. So all three would be notified, and then on their phone, on their laptop, or at that station, they would be able to see the cameras on that, what's causing that problem. So multiple people would be alert and observing. There also is a function that the board can decide later to allow access for local police. If there was an emergency and they want an eyes inside, we can give them an immediate access.
Thank you.
All in favor?
Aye.
Anybody opposed? The motion passes. May I have a motion to approve the construction invoices for completed work through February 20th, 2025?
So moved.
Motion made by Mr. Tura, may I have a second? Second by Ms. Heen. Any discussion on this item? All in favor?
Aye.
Anybody opposed? The motion passes. Onto public comments on non-agenda items 15.0. Mrs. Heen.
This section is for non-agenda items. Please come up, state your name and address, and keep your comments to two to three minutes, please. Kelly, did anybody sign up?
Yes, first we have Wesley Match. Okay. Next is Mariana Fox.
Thank you. I would just like to say, Mr. Broski, I have been in the education field for 33 years as a teacher and as an administrator. I have never, in all of those years, been so embarrassed by a school board member speaking to his taxpayers like that before. To answer your question, to answer your question, where was I? I was raising my children and I was still hearing comments. But where will I be in the future? I will be running a campaign to run against you.
Dustin Giffen? Dustin Giffen? Lauren Harts?
I am Lauren Harts and I live at 1138 Mettler Drive. I have two children at the middle school, both who take advantage of the theater program. I own a business close by a mental health private practice. I would like to use my experience in this as an example. I have made a commitment to serve clients. You all have made a commitment to serve students. The primary means that we do this is by hiring trained professionals. In my work, I see it as my responsibility to not only serve the clients that I work with directly, but to create a supportive work environment for the clinicians who work for me. I would appreciate if you're listening. I do this not only because it's the right thing to do, but because I know that the more support. I see it as my responsibility to not only serve the clients that I work with directly, but to create a supportive work environment for the clinicians that work for me. I do this not only because it's the right thing to do, but because I know that the more support, security, and safety that they feel at work, the better they could be able to serve those and our care. I hate thinking about money, but it's also a necessary part of my job. My bookkeeper always says to me, Lauren, don't ask if you can do it, ask what needs to be, what needs to happen so that it can be done. So when I make decisions, the first two things that come to mind are what impact does this have on our clients or students? And what impact will this have on the clinicians and administrators in my group? It feels to me that these are not the same questions that you all ask yourself. It seems that this group, and not all of you, because I question which voices are actually heard and considered on this stage, are constantly making decisions that impact our teachers, staff, and children. And then a cycle continues. People catch wind of a potential decision to be made that feels detrimental to those you are committed to be responsible to. We are made aware of this. Teachers and staff take time out of their evenings to attend these meetings, and groups of community members, parents, and teachers rally around them. This is not a good use of time. There are concerns about the budget, but you hire a superintendent who makes $250,000 when the average superintendent in salary in Pennsylvania is between $101,000 and $181,000. You vote yes to frivolous expenses when the foundation of this system, the teachers, are being stomped on and kicked around, which will ultimately result in students falling through this foundational cracks. I encourage you, as you make these decisions, to truly consider who you are responsible to, the students. And continually, and continuously causing stress to those teachers, staff, and other adults who dedicate their careers to serving them is a poor use of everyone's time and resources.
I'm sorry, ma'am. Ma'am? Who just, who just spoke? Lauren, okay. Did you say? Okay. No, that's okay. Just, you can say your name.
Hi. My name is Sue Anistadico. I am a. I am a phys ed teacher at the primary school. I wasn't planning on speaking, but I wanted to comment on what Mr. Broski said. You're right, we weren't here. We were not here for the other board, but you know why? I've been a teacher in this district for 23 years. I trusted the board. I trusted them to do what they were supposed to do. And now, maybe you all are sitting here suffering what the previous board did or what anybody did. I don't care. I don't care how much you make, Dr. Kostagna. If, if you're worth it, you're worth it. I'm sure people don't care how much I make, or they say I make too much. people don't care how much I make, or they say I make too much money, but I'll tell you what, I'm worth it. You go to the primary school, you do my job, I'm worth every penny I make. And, Mr. Borowski, I didn't think that it was very professional for you to blame us for just questioning what is going on. We have every right to question, and I get that. I understand. But like I said, we trusted the board that we have. We are supposed to trust the board that we have, and we are trying to trust you. And you are furloughing my friends and my colleagues that have been with me in this district for over twenty-three years. And not only am I a teacher, but I'm a resident. I've lived in Bridgeville all of my life. I went to Chargers Valley. I love this district. I used to be a proud CV teacher. I am now a proud teacher.
Good evening. Uh, my name is Kim Galdo, twenty-five, McMichael Road, in Collier Township. Um, my son Steven is in his junior year at ACLD Tillotson School. Um, I'm here to address the issue of outsourcing our students' transportation. We moved Steven from the public school to Tillotson six years ago, and Chargers Valley is responsible for his transportation. A year or two ago, Steven's van service was outsourced to a limo company down on Route fifty-one. During that time, there were multiple calls by me to the owner of the limo company at least once a week, asking where my child was. Dismissals at three-thirty, and five o'clock would rule around if my son wasn't home. There were many days that he didn't arrive home until five-thirty. During this time, one of Steven's drivers quit because he said they took on too much and he wasn't doing it, saying it wasn't fair to the children. While all of this was stressful as a parent, as a child with autism, of a child with autism, there was a day I'll never forget. Knowing that he was always getting home late, on this day, at first, I didn't think much of it. The time was five-thirty, and I started calling the owner of the company. He also had concern in his voice and called the driver on another phone so that I could hear. The driver didn't answer three times over twenty minutes. The owner told me that he'd call me back. Within five minutes, he called back telling me that my son fell asleep in the backseat of a van. We're not talking about a gigantic small bus. We're talking about a van with four children. So, he fell asleep in the backseat, and the driver was on his way home to Mount Lebanon, upset about something with his family. There were four students on that van, and that driver didn't have the awareness that my son had gotten on his van that day. It was six-twenty when my son got home. The CV drivers are mothers, fathers, grandmas, grandpas, who genuinely care about the children they transport. I have nothing but love and respect for all of them and what they do each day. Throughout Steven's school years, I have worked with incredible people who have driven him, CV drivers. Carol Hodge was, um, Steven's van driver at one point and is now a secretary at the Transportation Department. She called me even today. She didn't have to. Called me today to just make me aware that Steven's van driver is sick, um, and that I shouldn't be concerned that Steven would be having different drivers over the next couple of days.
Ma'am, I'm sorry. You're long past your three minutes. If you could just...
I'm almost done.
Yeah, wrap it. Thank you.
His current driver is always kind. Stacy. Where's she at? She's always kind and looking out for Steven, letting me know any issues. She takes pride in what she does. That is caring. Caring about our students. These people care. I'm not sure why outsourcing is on the table. Money is always the answer. I have no idea. But I do believe if you... You are inviting a whole lot of problems if you choose to go that route. The children will simply be a number, like my child was that day. And a lot of really caring and dedicated people will lose their jobs. Please do the right thing about these kids. This isn't a joke. It's really not. Thank you. Next, Kim Ludwig. Kevin Ludwig? Oh, sorry.
Pamela Ludwig, nineteen thirteen, Albert Lane. Me again. I just wanted to ask, add in something from before. Uh, maybe you guys can have a discussion on it. What will happen with the software and tech programming upgrade that the parents donated to last year for the IS? Will they be losing out on that money when the teacher goes away? Because their students only got to use it for one year. But now, to what I was originally going to say. I want to correct a comment I mistakenly said at the last board meeting when I spoke. I said the security guards make more than we, the drivers, do. I misspoke, and I apologize. You, the board, are paying out more per hour for the security company than we, the drivers, get paid per hour, is what I meant to say. CDL drivers make twenty-nine and some change with routes no longer than four and a half to five hours a day. Non-CDL drivers make twenty-two dollars an hour and some change a day. We are part-time employees. You are paying out security sixteen hours a day, seven days a week.